Thank you. So let's test this out. Good? Good? Okay. So, thank you all for coming out tonight to share your thoughts and ideas with us. We decided to take the rather unusual step of bringing our meeting to South Eugene as a way to emphasize the importance of the recent planning efforts, as well as the importance of community engagement in general. Everyone needs to have a voice in shaping the future of our community, and also to help shape how we engage with you in that discussion going forward. The format for tonight will be similar to that of our regular public forums. Those wishing to speak must submit a completed request to speak form to the information desk. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. And just for your information, people can sign up all the way to 7 o'clock to speak. So, right now, we have thirty-two people signed up to speak. And we have to be out of here by ten. So... We have to be out of here by ten. So if we have to make adjustments, we will have to make adjustments. But that's the... They need to clean it up and get ready for school tomorrow. So that's the... That's the deal. As with all council meetings, tonight's forum will be recorded by Metro TV, and it will be web streaming. All testimony submitted in advance of tonight's forum and the video, and any notes from the video... From the forum, will be made available on the city's website in the days following the forum. And council will discuss the forum and what steps they choose to take forward at a work session scheduled on September twenty-sixth. That's next Monday. We are hoping tonight to hear your thoughts about future engagement processes related to South Willamette, especially any comments or ideas that have not been expressed already. In addition, we welcome your input on broader community engagements throughout the community with future area planning efforts that will occur in order to meet our Envision Eugene goals. So first up is David Monk. He's over here, David, followed by Ed Moy.
Mayor Percy, councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the engagement processes related to the South Willamette planning. We appreciate your efforts to restart this community discussion and hope that our thoughts on how the city can best move forward with this process will provide you with meaningful input. The Southeast Neighbors Board of Directors submits these comments for the public record as elected representatives of the neighborhood association without intending to represent the opinions of the larger neighborhood. We believe that Envision Eugene... Excuse me. We believe that the Envision Eugene process has in general successfully identified community... Excuse me. Community support for affordable housing, neighborhood livability, viable transportation options, and protection of our natural resources. We think the planning process in regards to the South Willamette area rezon failed from the beginning to accommodate the concerns of those area residents who would be most impacted by the changes proposed. Understanding and appreciating citizens' concerns is essential to developing trust and creating successful outcomes. Proposing to change the zoning and land use regulations, as was done with Swazi, created unnecessary conflict with area neighbors. If implemented, as proposed, the rezoning would have undoubtedly displaced many low and middle-income residents and led to the destruction of most of the affordable homes in the area. This failure is not unique to Eugene, nor to land use planning. As many governing jurisdictions and agencies are discovering, broad public support is best achieved by reaching out first to the most affected residents and ensuring that they have sufficient capacity among themselves to fully participate in the process. Meaningful and effective public participation is often successful when the organization in charge commits to integrating this approach into its staff training, its program priorities, and its efforts to implement the policies of their decision-making bodies. We do not believe that a citywide planning process is sufficient to develop proposals for specific areas of our community. Each transportation corridor has its own unique characteristics, and area residents with their own thoughts about how best to accommodate growth. The Envision Eugene process has identified key social values pertinent to planning for a growing population. It's essential that we now focus our planning for specific areas with the understanding that the process should be driven by area residents. A refinement plan process is best suited to fulfill this goal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed Moy is next, followed by Vic Harrington.
My name is Ed Moy, and I live and pay taxes in Betty Taylor's neighborhood. Over the past year, my house has been assaulted by Swazi. During this time... During that time, along with hundreds of my neighbors, I have attended endless meetings. At no time in any of those meetings have I ever heard anyone who lives in the neighborhood denounce densification. Most just want to see infill that does not destroy their neighborhood. It is my belief that the Brown-Clark Plan presents the best hope for these legitimate ambitions. But to hear the mayor tell it, there's still not enough public comment. As we enter into the second year of such comment, it seems to me the city is pushing another Swazies top-down, we-know-best process. After years of working to marginalize the affected neighborhoods, the city planners want to get more input from people who don't live there, which is how they came up with Swazi in the first place. I predict that the chaos will again ensue. Then the we-know-best planners will step in, cherry-pick the public comments, and son of Swazi will rise from the ashes. Over the past year, over six hundred people signed a petition denouncing Swazi. Over six hundred people! I like... They likewise implored the city to implement a refinement plan where the neighborhoods drive the plan, not the planning department, not carpetbaggers from outside the area. After all, if you want to know about a neighborhood, who are you going to ask? The people who live there? Or paid lobbyists from Salem, Portland, and New York City? My neighborhood is eager to proceed with the Brown-Clark Plan, and yet the city seems to want to ignore the offer. Planners have made a big public show of denouncing Swazi, but if they want to heal Swazi's wounds, they need to play a role much closer to a helpful county agent than a slippery apologist for the emperor's new clothes. Let the neighborhood drive these decisions and support them in accomplishing their goals, and only then will the city planning department again earn the right to say they work for "we" the people. The Brown-Clark Plan also sets the stage for other neighborhoods to see the planning process as an opportunity, not as a tax support, as assault on the homes they hold dear. If city planners insist on top-down paradigm, I foresee a long bitter fight. South Willamette neighbor groups will be glad to help other nascent neighborhood groups to organize and fight any son of a Swazi. I tell you that these arguments will not be swept under the rug. These are people's homes. Isn't it time our taxes went toward Envision Eugene's legally mandated goal to protect, repair, and enhance neighborhood livability? The Brown-Clark Plan offers a great opportunity to get to work on that future. Just what are we waiting for? It's been six years already.
Vic Harrington is up next, followed by Sue Walling.
Hi, y'all. My name is Vic Harrington. I'm the current chair of Sheena, South Willamette, Southwest Hills Neighborhood Association. I'm the co-chair of the Council of South Eugene Neighborhoods. I reside in Betty Taylor's ward. So, I want to start with say, okay, so Swazi is dead. Thank you. But is this forum the start of Swazi Two? That's a big fear that we have. We've heard and argued from the old voices over this last year regarding the South Willamette rezoning. We have met with Oregon consensus, the conclusion distrust. Is the delay of the Councilor Clark's and Councilor Brown's proposal to restrict the rezoning into just a local business corridor, is that rebuilding trust to not have that vote? And go forward with that? Do... Does this all-party's opinion here tonight rebuild this trust in any way? Or are we still causing more distrust of what's going on? Six hundred people have signed the petition supporting a refinement plan. All four neighborhood associations in South Eugene voted in support of the January letter sent to you in support of a refinement plan. The South Willamette neighbors unanimously voted to approve the Clark-Brown Initiative that restricts the rezoning to the commercial area. I personally did not like the inclusion of MuPTI in that because I did not believe it is a correct tool. I think the right tool is something that provides better jobs, higher-paying jobs in the city because gentrification is going to happen with the line around... The circle around the city. You're going to have higher-priced properties because there's supply and demand. The neighbors who live and work in the area of the rezoning should have the final say in a neighborhood decision. The lobbyists and idealists that live outside the city boundary should not have even been at the table. Whether South Willamette... Whether South Willamette or one of the other neighborhoods that are next in the rezoning process, it is those neighbors that you need to be listening to. So you've heard every voice by now. It is time to act and move on your next project. Let's get this behind us. We need an honest government that we can be proud of. So please, let's do this. Thank you.
So Walling is next, followed by Josh Newman.
Hi, I'm Sue Walling. I live at 108 High Street in Ward Seven. Thank you, Mayor, for convening this forum and to all of you for listening to citizens' views about the future. I have several quick points to make. First, any planning that we do needs to be firmly rooted, not only in the state ride requirements, but also in the seven pillars of Envision Eugene. Envision Eugene is the best framework we have for what we want our future to look like. This is a pretty wonky crowd here, so I would guess that nearly everybody in this room participated in Envision Eugene in some way, and so did hundreds of other people throughout the community. We mostly agreed on what we want for Eugene's future, and we need... So we need to use Envision Eugene and all seven pillars of it, not just the one or two that we like best, all of them, as a touchstone for all subsequent plans. Secondly, I think before we do any more specific neighborhood planning, we need an intermediate step that will help translate the broad, general pillars of Envision Eugene into data-driven guidelines for what it means for each part of our community. For instance, if we need sixteen hundred units of multifamily housing or X-units of low-income housing or a certain number of sites for missing-middle housing, how much of it belongs in South Eugene? How much in West Eleven? How much out River Road? We also need to reach agreement on what we even mean by low-income housing or a walkable neighborhood or along a transit corridor. I think we need to empower a panel of community experts guided by a robust public input to figure out how to divvy up the costs and the benefits of growth among the various parts of town. We need to look at what makes sense in terms of developable land, real estate economics, environmental constraints, and social equity. We don't want to put all the low-income housing up in North Eugene just because there's some land there and because it's compatible with all the other low-income housing that's already up there. And we certainly don't want to pin our hopes on one big mixed-use development somewhere that's on a site that are on a location that no developer's ever going to build anything. We need to reach agreement on how to implement Envision Eugene, what makes sense and what's fair. Only after we've decided, as a community, on the broad outlines of how much of what goes where, can we begin work on refinement plans or special area zones to specifically figure out where new development fits, what it looks like, how to make it compatible with what's already there, and how to make it happen. And finally, a quick note on livability, which we all want. Livability is not really something that's inherent in the design of a neighborhood. For twenty years, I lived in the woods in South Eugene. It was very quiet. It was green. It was very livable. But gradually, my life changed. My job changed. My values evolved. And my house didn't. I then moved into a condo in downtown Eugene, and it's much more livable for me now than my old house would have been. Livability really doesn't lie in the physical characteristics of the place. It's in the relationship between that place and a person's life. Eugene has thousands and thousands of people who differ in income, age, values, lifestyles, preferences. But we only have a couple of different types of housing.
Thank you.
That mismatch doesn't support ongoing livability. Thank you.
Josh Newman is next, followed by Eliza Koschinsky.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, and thank you for the opportunity to say a few things. I'm glad that I followed Sue Walling, and I tend to agree with a lot of what she had to say, and I'll try not to repeat some of those same points. I am the co-chair for Friendly Area Neighborhood, and I live at 150 West Twenty-Fourth Place in Ward One. So, we learned some lessons here with the South Willamette Special Area Zone, and these are lessons that I think have... You've heard some of which from some of the former participants of what happens when you don't talk to the most impacted people first. And so... But these are lessons now that, looking forward, we can broadly apply to the city as a whole. But what we need, as Sue mentioned, is really a process that bridges the seven pillars of Eugene... Of Envision Eugene with these more specific area plans or refinement plans as they come out. And so, so looking forward, you know, Fan supports... The Fan Board supports a process that maintains the integrity of Envision Eugene, is inclusive, uses a common language, a common lexicon, to describe the terms so that people understand what is being said. It creates twenty-minute neighborhoods along transit corridors. We don't lose that in translation. Addresses housing affordability and low-income housing and preserves our natural resources. But what we really need is for the City Council and for the City Manager to lead on this. We can't do that in a vacuum. And when there's a vacuum, that's when... There's a lot of confusion ensues because self-appointed experts then fill the void. So what we need is really the City Manager to be out in front and, you know, stand firm on what the goals are. Thank you.
Eliza Koschinsky is next, followed by Emily Semple.
Hi, I'm Eliza Koschinsky. I'm a resident of George Brown's Ward and a member of WE CAN, the Walkable Eugene Citizens Advisory Network. Over the past eleven months, members of WE CAN have had conversations with many people with very different perspectives and points of view. We have found that, in general, we share many common goals. Most of us, regardless of our opinions on the South Willamette Code itself, support the pillars of Envision Eugene. We'd like to see Eugene where our natural resources and open spaces are protected, where we begin to repair the environmental damage, where the residents... Where residents can find housing that meets their budget and where we have a choice of transportation methods. We want to see incremental growth that does not destroy what we love about our neighborhoods. At the same time, there are a wide variety of perspectives regarding how to accomplish these goals. Trust has been damaged not just between the city and residents, but between residents of different points of view. And the Brown-Clark proposal is not going to help rebuild that trust between residents. In thinking about the South Willamette process, several elements stood out. First, it appeared that Envision Eugene process missed a step. It went directly from broad, community-supported pillars to localized planning in the South Willamette area. The difficult questions of how the pillars are balanced were not discussed in depth. While most of us agree that neighborhoods need to do their part to achieve citywide goals, in combination with local goals, there was no discussion of what each neighborhood's part was. In addition, there was no forum where citizens with different interests and opinions could talk to each other to gain understanding of differences and perspectives and seek win-win solutions. To move forward, we feel that we need to take a step back. Prior to initiating further localized processes, we suggest that the city partake in a community process to clarify our terminology, add detail to our citywide goals, and identify the share of burdens and benefits of growth that each area is expected to take on. This is not instead of a localized planning process, such as a refinement plan, but in addition to and preceding a process such as that. It would create a framework in which refinement plans could be more successful by creating greater consistency between local and citywide goals and providing a forum where different areas could coordinate broader initiatives that impact multiple neighborhoods. Eugene is facing a challenge of affordable housing and housing choice, one that many cities across the nation are struggling with. We are, in some ways, fortunate that we have the opportunity to work together to develop constructive, community-supported solutions before it becomes as big a crisis here. Our community is committed to identifying proactive ways forward and to tackling these difficult issues. The lack of clarity about how we move forward...
Thank you. Emily Semple is next, followed by Jerry Minahan.
I'm Emily Semple, Ward One. The people of South Willamette are eager to form a team to work with staff and council on the refinement plan for their neighborhood. This is the logical next step as outlined in the Brown-Clark Initiative. I urge council and mayor to move forward with the formation of a community planning committee at Monday night's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Minahan is next, followed by Ron Beavert.
My name is Jerry Minahan, and I... My home at 2905 Mill Street was in the direct line of Swazi rezoning. Special thanks to Greg Evans for putting the brakes on Swazi. Thank goodness it failed. A great deal of time and public funds were invested in its creation, promotion, and discussion. Let's get the next version right. I encourage the mayor and council to follow the neighborhood associations' lead and collaborate with them on the creation and implementation of a refinement plan. Both would support... Or the Clark-Brown Initiative. Both would seem to support Envision Eugene while preserving neighborhood zoning and character. Rezoning residential neighborhoods is not a fair, just, or righteous option. Greater empathy on the part of those who came up with the plan would ensure that it didn't happen. It would prevent them creating, supporting, and voting for things that they would absolutely reject and disavow if they were themselves directly impacted, as I would have been. South Willamette, as far as walkability goes, South Willamette is already very walkable. Simple improvements can and should be made rather than doing large-scale, top-down improvements. There are unfinished sidewalks in my neighborhood. Crosswalks could be put in on Twenty-Ninth Avenue. A lot of other options. More importantly, though, for me, is how the city takes responsibility for the abject unwalkability of some of the neighborhoods that do the worst job of sustainable land use, like South and Southwest Hills, South Spring Street, Gillum, some of the McMansions going up on the River Road corridor. Why is my neighborhood targeted when so many other neighborhoods could do with huge improvements? If drastic measures such as rezoning neighborhoods are to be considered to meet Envision Eugene standards, I want them applied across the city. I do not want my home and greatest asset and investment to be a sacrificial lamb. Last spring, a characterization of my neighborhood was made at a public forum as being upper-middle-class and homogeneous. This is ridiculous and offensive. I am a first-generation American whose impoverished immigrant father sacrificed much to allow me to live the American dream of homeownership in one of the most beautiful places in the world. My neighborhood is full of paraprofessionals and professionals, nurses, teachers, therapists, engineers, retirees, and none of them bear the title M.D., J.D., or C.E.O. Finally, since this may be my last chance to publicly thank Mayor Percy for her service, I'd like to do so. I'm very grateful that, for me, your legacy will not be Swazi, but the amazing new bike lanes on South Willamette Street that I absolutely love.
Ron Beavert is next, followed by Leslie Go.
Good evening, Ron Beavert. I'm in Betty Taylor's Ward. What I've concluded from the South Willamette Special Area Zone saga is that we really need to focus on the residents of affected areas and get their input into decisions that are made that affect those people. Oregon's Goal One is citizen involvement. A neighborhood refinement plan is the best way to create a planning policy for an area. The refinement plan is Oregon's statutory form of community-based plan. The work is done by a planning team with a majority composition of residents and businesses from the affected area. The team also includes members from surrounding areas. The members of the planning team commit to being impartial investigators to seek out views and create a plan which represents the unified view of the team as best representing community needs, values, and interests for the area. Residents and business owners in a specified area are best suited to focus on the social, environmental, and economic well-being of that area. A refinement plan is the best way to include the relevant issues of density, infill, transportation, infrastructure, affordability, livability, climate change, and sustainability while planning the future growth and development within Eugene's residential areas. The neighborhood livability pillar of Envision Eugene is to protect, repair, and enhance neighborhood livability. A refinement plan is the best way for residents and businesses in an area that have the largest stake in the... stake in the area to develop the policies that meet the goals and objectives of Envision Eugene and our metro plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Lowe is next. Leslie? No, Leslie?
Sorry.
Okay. Okay, Janet Beavert is next, followed by Bill Aspergen. Janet? Yes. You're trotting, I know.
I live and own several properties across the street from the Willard Schoolgrounds in the Southwest Hills neighborhood, and own a lot in the Southeast neighborhood. A refinement plan needs to be the foundation for our future changes of my and other neighborhoods to mold the growth and development within the residential and commercial areas, the transportation, infrastructure, density, infill, affordability, and climate change issues, so that it remains sustainable, livable, and walkable. Presently, the South Willamette Street change has negatively affected West 29th Avenue. There's a continual roaring sound of traffic now avoiding Willamette Street and its shopping area. At times, there's block-long backed-up traffic from the Lincoln Street and Woodfield Station traffic lights. Increased congestion is unsafe and not acceptable. Traffic counting needs to be done on West 29th Avenue. The downtown no-bike-riding-on-sidewalks law needs to apply to South Willamette and 29th Avenue. It's absurd to provide bike lanes for bicycles and skateboards and see people not riding in them but next to them on sidewalks, so that pedestrians can't have safe, walkable sidewalks. For neighborhoods to remain livable, building developments need to provide adequate onsite parking. Cascade manors buildings and others need to provide ample employee patron, resident, and visitor parking. West 30th Avenue is not their parking lot. There is no one-half car, so a half-car parking space building site requirement is ridiculously low. The city does not require developers to divulge their investors, but who are they and where are they from? Developers apply for Mupti's 10-year tax breaks, while property owners get a yearly 3% tax increase. Please stop the city-budget ripoff policy called Mupti that has the general property owner subsidizing the developer and their wealthy investors. Envision Eugene supports schools and parks, natural spaces and open spaces for a healthy community, so please keep Willard School public lands and low density in the metro plan. Multifamily housing options and housing mix should not negatively impact established neighborhoods and businesses by decreasing solar access. I do not want a repeat of the South Willamette Special Area Zone nor the Portland's density, infill, and affordability problems. I support a refinement plan for South Willamette area. This approach, with city planners' assistance and city council's support, has succeeded many times previously in Eugene. Please trust the citizens that live and own property in South Willamette and that run and own businesses here to produce proposals for policies and implementation ideas to meet the goals and objectives of Envision Eugene and the metro plan that are appropriate to the area and the wide neighborhood community's support.
Thank you. Bill Aspergen is next, followed by Mary Bororby.
Hi, I'm Bill Aspergen. I live in the South University neighborhood, Ward 3, Allen Zelenka's Ward. I'll try to keep this brief because I'm hungry and I want dinner and I want to see the end of the Bears game. I don't live in South Willamette neighborhood, but I shop there for everything from groceries to hardware. I often eat lunch there. I drive to the area regularly, and I'm enjoying riding my bike on the new Willamette bike lanes. I think it's time to put the South Willamette Special Area Zone away and move forward. A new approach is needed. Future South Willamette plans must be driven by the people that live there and the people that have businesses in that community. Their goal should be to produce a refinement plan. To that end, I fully endorse the South Willamette Street Initiative proposed by councilors Brown and Clark. Their plan will engage the immediate affected neighbors and local stakeholders, yet as the plan develops, give the remainder of the Eugene community sufficient opportunities to weigh in. Their approach will provide a high level of community engagement, resulting in solid community support. Oregon consensus noted that future planning efforts must make it a priority, excuse me, to build trust with the people directly affected by the plans. The best way to accomplish this is to trust the neighbors to drive the refinement plan process. Please seriously consider the Brown-Clark proposal in your discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary, you're up next, followed by Brian Weaver.
I'm Shorter. I'm Mary Bororby, and I lived at 24th Place and McMillan and a Half for 34 years, and prior to that, I lived higher on the Hill. I would just like to see a little more caretaking, and I feel like there's forced density upon us in a very restricted area that's very established. And now with the redesign of Willamette Street, it's horrendous traffic backup if you're in the left-turn lane, which does not seem to resolve many of the problems for me because I have to turn and head west, coming, heading north. There's usually a block or two that you have to wait to get traffic before you can turn, so I would like you to reconsider that. And I and some other neighbors have also brought three previous code issues before, and one of them goes back to Bobby Green, which was in the 80s, and that's still unresolved. I have not heard anything, but the building has since fallen down. So I would like to see a little more response on some of these issues. I spent 45 minutes with the mayor and an email to Mr. Brown, and I just think there needs to be follow-up on some of these people who are really concerned for things and want to be involved, and I just think it needs to happen before you look at more zoning issues. So that's my...
Thank you. Brian Weaver is up next, followed by Jennifer Smith.
Good evening, councilors. Brian Weaver, Ward 1. It seems like this forum is a complete departure from the recommendations made by the Oregon This forum really, it's more like a Monday night public forum that's offered every week, so there's really nothing special about it. Apparently, the city is opposed to a community-based process and still favors a city-forced decision. Actually, and I hate to get off on this, but it reminds me of the West Eugene EMX process five years ago, where the businesses along the corridor were the last ones to be officially notified of that project. So here we are again, we're doing the same type of process. You know, the neighbors, the stakeholders are the last ones to take control of their situation, or at least have fair input. Same thing's playing out here. Okay, so how do we move forward? Here's my idea, for what it's worth, now, after five years, the city could have or should have followed Springfield's lead to change the code to allow the open spaces and vacant lots to be developed that are just shy of current code. In other words, reduce the lot size to allow infill and open spaces, rather than upsetting an already affordable, livable neighborhood. Just doesn't make sense to me. As we have witnessed, the South Willamette Special Area zoning, it'll only make housing less affordable, less livable, which violates the pillars of Envision Eugene. So I think, yeah, that said, I mean, this needs to be taken to heart by the city manager and the city staff behind me, because it's just not working. It's rather obvious. Thank you.
Jennifer Smith is next, followed by Howie Banet.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to give input. My name is Jennifer Smith, and I own a home in Ward 2. We, the City of Eugene, have a problem. The rent is too damn high. It's no wonder. Eugene is a wonderful place to live, and there's not enough housing. One of my favorite questions to ask people when getting to know them is, what made you move to Eugene? Everyone has a story. It's notable that very few of us have stories that originate before ourselves or their parents' decision to move there, here, to Eugene. There was room for us then. Many of us were able to buy a modest, affordable home in a quiet neighborhood with nearby amenities. We felt community. Now suddenly, we have false fears of scarcity. There is room for workforce housing. There are models of appropriate, energy-efficient growth. Cities are the future. When done correctly, well-functioning cities can solve climate-related problems and can house our community members without sacrificing what we love about our city. It's time for leadership. We need to make some trade-offs as a city, as a community. We need to have a citywide plan. City manager Reese and council, please step up to this challenge. A broad coalition of interests have come together to propose to you a two-step plan. Step 1 is to develop a collaborative community goal-setting process based on the worthy yet unacted-upon pillars of Envision Eugene. This collaborative community goal-setting process would allow us to build community consensus and common understanding, which would help ensure that later, more localized processes, such as refinement plans or area plans, contribute to these broader citywide goals, and that each area has its fair share of both the benefits and burdens of growth. Step 2 is development of localized refinement or area plans. Neighborhood-level recommendations should be the way to ensure implementation of citywide goals agreed upon in Step 1. The issues we, the City of Eugene, face are not unique. However, we are especially well-equipped to bring our best selves forward, along with our skills, to find consensus and build a future we can all happily live in. It's time to act. By not acting, we are still impacting the future, but not in a way the future will thank us for.
Thank you. Howie, next, followed by Evan Fodor.
Thank you. My name is Howie Banet, 1835 East 28th, and I'm in Allen Zelenka's Ward. I haven't really been involved in this issue very much, except that for 40 years, I've been riding my bike and driving my car through the area, and I have really loved seeing the changes in some of the houses that are in the area between Amazon Parkway and Willamette Street. And it seemed, I then became afraid that what the city was going to do was to put pressure on those houses and lead to additional zoning and then gradual deterioration. There are a few houses that are in bad shape, but there are many, many houses whom homeowners have put a lot of effort and a lot of beautiful improvements into that area. In contrast, I feel that Willamette Street needs a lot of help. The sidewalks are unsatisfactory, the telephone poles are in the sidewalks. Now it seems like we have a development proposal to put a large, one-story building along Willamette Street with more parking than there was before, and this seems to be the wrong direction, and I'm wondering why that is happening, rather than have some regulations in place that will get the kind of development along Willamette Street, including housing on top of commercial, and reduction in the number of curb cuts and so forth, to make that more walkable and more livable. I do drive the car, and I don't share some of the comments that have been made. I've found the change to be great, and I really appreciate the bikeways as well. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. Evan Fodor is next, followed by Christine Sun.
Hi there, I'm Evan Fodor. I want to start by thanking the mayor and the council for holding this meeting here in a convenient location for the neighborhood and a convenient time for working people and family people, so thank you for taking the time and effort to do that. There are a lot of fundamental problems with the South Willamette Special Area Zone. I live within the 500-foot impact area on East 32nd, and I think at this point, it's not worth trying to recite the, you know, the things, the number of issues. I think they're well-documented at this point, but I want to also commend the council for terminating the plan. I think that was the right action, and, you know, the question is now, what do we do? How should we move forward? And I think, in looking at the past, the plan that's been terminated, the issue over a period of time, the comments that I've seen, there are two areas where there's a lot of agreement. One is that building heights is a concern. 10- to 12-story buildings along South Willamette, big concern. So that's virtually unanimous, that the building height represents a potential problem. We haven't had any buildings that high, but it could be a problem. Second of all, you know, there's widespread support for the idea of promoting walkability in the neighborhood. So those two things are both embodied in the Clark-Brown proposal, so I think that's a good first step in moving forward. I want to just emphasize the commercial aspect of that because I think there, in addition to working with a C-2 zone, I really would urge the city to focus on that, you know. To me, it's a much higher priority than looking at neighborhoods and trying to figure out what to do with neighborhoods. We've got a C-2 zone that allows very intense development to the property line, 10 to 12 stories high, and it's a really unsuitable zone for many of the places where it's located. So you could look at that zone, rework the C-2 zone. Also, I think that, you know, based on my examination, it looks like Envision Eugene is not anticipating any residential development on commercial land. So they've, in terms of looking at the potential for developing Eugene, that is actually an enormous area. We have many thousands of acres of commercial, many thousands of acres of C-2 land. All of that can now accommodate residential. It could potentially accommodate it better with, if you rework the C-2 zone, but there's a potential for thousands of dwelling units, and that is not part of the calculations that have been done for Envision Eugene. So if we're still looking to find places to put people, the commercial zone and the C-2 zone in particular is an excellent place to look at, and I think it ought to be part of our inventory of what's available in the City of Eugene. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Christine Sun is next, followed by Richard Sun.
Good evening, and thank you all for being here. I'm Christine Sun, and I'm in Betty Taylor's Ward. While the South Willamette Special Area Zone was under review by the Eugene City Council, several neighbors attending the South Willamette Neighbors' Meetings inquired about CC and ARs, covenants, conditions, and restrictions that they knew existed for their properties that was attached to their titles. Several of us followed through with further research and discovered that indeed, within the boundaries of the proposed plan, four subdivisions were still actively covered by CC and ARs. Those four are Plummer, Crestview, Replat Block 3, amended plat of Rosedale, and Second Rosedale Edition. We have since engaged specialist land-use attorneys Zach Mitke and Liam Sherlock of Hutchison Cox to review said documents and provide advice on their effective enforcement. We were informed in writing that, quote, "The CC and ARs are valid and enforceable by individual property owners, except the racially restrictive covenants that violated the Fair Housing Act, and not just by a homeowners' association," assuming one even still exists. We have good case law to back that up, and that's the end of their first quote. The second quote was, "Thus, if you see something proposed or happening in violation of the CC and ARs, then you, as a property owner, can individually or in tandem with other interested or outraged property owners..." other interested or outraged property owners file an action in Lane County Circuit Court for declaratory and injunctive relief and breach of CC and ARs to stop the development." And the attorneys further said, "We have further, we have filed such actions and they are relatively straightforward, as legal cases go," end of quote. With this advice, residents within the subdivisions hereby notify all interested parties that property owners in the four South Willamette subdivisions governed by CC and ARs are prepared to enforce their rights with legal action when and if necessary. Thank you.
Richard Sun is next, followed by Joyce Eaton.
Thank you, Mayor Piercy, for this forum. It's good to see all the councils here again. I'm in Ward Two of Betty Taylor. The South Willamette Special Area Zone proposed in 2015 elicited many objections from residents living in this part of Eugene, including myself. However, I firmly believe that one aspect of this plan was admirable and deserves, with appropriate modifications, to be used as a model in other parts of the city. I am referring to that aspect of the South Special Area Zone Plan that promotes densification by erecting multi-storied mixed-use structures on either side of South Willamette Corridor. It's about time that Eugene think of densifying commercial areas in this and other ways. This will help to contain our unending commercial sprawl on 11th, Coburg, and so forth. And in the process, it should also relieve residents from having to carry all the burdens of achieving density on their shoulders. Thus, I urge the council to adopt the Clark and Brown Initiative to trim the South Willamette Special Area Zones to what were once its original boundaries, namely 24th to 29th Avenues, and to concentrate development of new multipurpose buildings on either side of this five-block area of South Willamette. Adoption of such a scheme should include a refinement plan that, among other things, will ensure preservation of the natural beauty offered to this part of the city by the presence of Spencer's Butte and surrounding hills. Thank you.
Thank you. Joyce Eaton is next, followed by Bonnie McCormack.
Hi, I'm Joyce Eaton. I have two family homes, one on the north side of Swasey and another on the south side. Here to say that we do need to have a refinement plan that takes the neighbors that are actual residents as part of the planning team. With regard to the city's engagement process on Swasey, this is what seemed to be lacking in the South Willamette Special Area Zone: honest presentations and information given by the city with regard to Swasey. First, the concept plan and the Swasey website lists the geographic extent from 23rd to 32nd. It goes from 22nd to 33rd. The concept plan listed South Town Business Association as a vibrant business association, but within three months of approval of the concept plan, SOBA was dissolved. The South Willamette Metro Plan, or the Swasey Metro Plan designation map, current and proposed, seems to be designed to be, to deceive. The colors for the medium density and the high density are so similar, they're indistinguishable. When you compare the colors of the maps to maps, they don't seem to be much change. But in truth, all of the lots that are south of 29th Avenue or north of 24th Avenue and east of Willamette are medium density, not high density. So when you visually compare the current and the proposed, it gives the illusion that it's the same, that they're all high density, so the change would be small, and that is not true. So Robin Hostick had said, "Commercial buildings are required to be built on the property line," and they're actually allowed. The list goes on. I don't have time to go through all of the ones that I have, but I was going to submit it later. More problems with this, but taken individually, the problems could be seen as inadvertent errors, but together, it gives the appearance that the city planning team is either indifferent, incompetent, or in cahoots with the developers. Oregon consensus cited, cited a lack of trust with the city, and these are some of the reasons. We were told that the deadline for submission of the information was the 20th, but at the beginning, Kitty Piercy has said that everything had to be submitted before this forum. We were not told that, so that shows that the trust issue is not just in the past.
Excuse me, that's not what I, what I said was, if you were going to speak tonight, you'd have to sign up before the forum.
You said what?
That before you speak tonight, you had to sign up for the forum.
But no, that you were saying if you had to submit materials also. So, okay, I, okay, if that's fine, we can submit materials by the 20th and then they will be, still be posted on the website.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, so that's good.
All it says is all.
Okay, so maybe the trust issues are in the past.
Sure, sure. Just want to give you an explanation, sorry.
Okay. So that's it.
So, next up is Bonnie McCormack, followed by Ralph McDonald.
Hi again. I'm Bonnie Bettman-McCorrak. I live in Ward One and I have for over 40 years. It's the densest ward in the city. I reject your entire premise that density is necessary in this neighborhood. Residential density does not exist in a vacuum. It's duplicitous to sacrifice this entire neighborhood based on the pure fiction that your intent is to densify inside the urban growth boundary in order to protect farm and forest land from sprawl. The city will continue to sprawl unless you get serious about regulating the density of commercial development and property and surface parking and require minimum densities on raw land. Besides, you already planned to breach the urban growth boundary, in any case, by expanding it over 900 acres based on inflated employment projections. If you are serious about building more density within the UGB, there are plenty of strategies to employ before sacrificing established neighborhoods. Mandate minimum densities in new development. You are permitting large tracts of very low-density single-family housing on raw land, even lower than what the 2015 Metro Plan postulated. Stop approving conditional use permits that convert residential housing units into commercial uses, especially in close, in neighborhoods surrounding downtown. That's a good example. Regulate strip malls and big box stores. Currently, vast surface parking lots are removed from the buildable lands inventory but are not taxed as developed property. I tried to change this 15 years ago. You should tax excessive surface parking at developed land rates. You are essentially subsidizing, you are essentially incentivizing this inefficient land use by providing a subsidy in the form of a discounted tax rate. Focus high density on existing MX transit corridors. That was the premise you used to justify investing $200 million in the transit corridors to begin with. You can utilize C-2 property there for residential and vertical housing. When I was a single working mom, I lived in this neighborhood. And in, in light of the fact that you may go forward with a refinement plan, and I would urge you, if you do that, to approve and adopt the regulating code language simultaneous with the refinement plan. But back in those days, when I was, when I didn't have the time or the resources, because I was first a full-time student, single mom, and then I was a, a single mom, full-time working parent, I didn't have the resources of the time to have been able to have participated in a process like this. It's up to you to protect the people who are disenfranchised by this process.
Ralph McDonald is next, followed by Pam Waddell.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Piercy and City Council for providing this forum. Very happy to be here. Two years ago and many hundreds of hours ago, our neighbors got together and formed South Willamette Neighbors', and I want to take this opportunity to thank the neighbors, you know, on both sides of 30th and Willamette that formed that group and put in so many, you know, many volunteer hours and sacrificed to that, to the group to address this issue. Also, the four neighborhood associations, Southeast Neighbors', Amazon Neighbors', Friendly Area Neighbors', and Sheena, South Hills Neighborhood Association. All of those neighborhoods got involved with the issue, spent hours addressing it, drew maps. I'd also like to thank We Can. It's only recently that I've had some good one-on-one conversations with We Can, and I think in our community, we really don't have, you know, the problems of many communities in the world. I think we're, we're all trying for the same thing in many respects, and my eyes have kind of been opened in that way. But tonight, for a second, I would like to just talk about one part of the issue. I think the science is still not completely written. I think that there's a recent Chicago study that shows that large, dense, multi-story buildings have a larger carbon footprint per resident than single-family houses. I think people that haven't seen that study should take a look at that, because that's newer than a lot of the older studies. I got involved because Chris Gerard, the Eugene Urban Forester, mentioned that some 300 large street trees were at risk in the South Willamette Special Area Zone. These large trees clean the air by reducing the temperature on sunny days and reducing the wind on winter days. They remove air pollutants, several different kinds of air pollutants. They stop the emission of volatile organic compounds, VOCs, and they have energy effects on the buildings. And there's a good study by David Novak of the US Forest Service in 2002, and there's a more recent study by UC Berkeley professor whose name I forget right now, I think 2014, that shows that these urban trees are very important to livability, especially at the end of a valley like we have here at Eugene. Someone could say, "Well, we had to chop down 100 large trees, but we planted 1,000 small trees." But if those small trees are going to do the temperature job and, and greenhouse gas job for us in 250 years, it, I think we should consult someone like our good neighbor, Kelsey Giuliani of our Children's Trust, to see if that really cuts the mustard. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Pam Waddell is next, followed by Lena Houston-Davison.
Hi, I'm Pam Waddell. I live at 52 East 23rd in Betty Taylor's area, just across the street from Ward One. Anyway, I realize, thanks for having us, by the way, and thank you, Mayor Piercy, for your service.
Thank you.
I realize the city planners are overdue in complying with the state requirement to find places to put the projected population increase over the 20 years, I guess, ending in 2032. We were told that the South Willamette Special Area Zone was integral to this. Turns out, it was not. I believe the area was targeted due to our small, humble homes, seen as maybe expendable, easy pickings for redevelopment. Given the errors and the impractical, unworkable ideas that I found as I plotted through the Special Area Zone 83 pages, I concluded the planners most likely didn't bother to walk the streets of our neighborhood very much. They would, so they didn't realize what they would be disrupting. A closer look, especially into the interior streets, would have revealed pleasant, successful, well-functioning neighborhoods, for the most part. That's not to say that there aren't opportune spots for development there, but I believe Swasey would have resulted in the gradual transfer, unintended, I'm sure, but the gradual transfer of property and wealth into fewer hands. Thank you for withdrawing it. Instead of breaking something that works as we add infill, we need to fix what really is broken. Before we rezone anything, we must seriously address the affordability issue and true sustainability. Sustainability isn't just packing people tighter and higher. We have to not trash affordable, good homes that already exist. We need to really consider the tree issue. We need mature trees, and I think we need a certain percentage of green space. No matter what we do, there's got to be just the right proportion of green space. There are a lot of reasons to distrust the city-led, top-down process. Not that, I mean, I've met some of the people, I like them, but, you know, it's just better when the people are involved. Maybe we won't end up with things like capstone ever again. So I really would support the refinement process. Thank you.
Thank you. Lena Houston-Davison is next, followed by Peter Gallagher.
Hi, I'm Lena Houston-Davison, and I live at 47 East 23rd in Ward One. And thank you again for having this forum and allowing our input. And I want to thank the council for withdrawing the Swasey plan. I don't normally get involved in this type of process, but I've learned a lot over the last couple of years. I've attended a lot of different meetings and subcommittee meetings and planning meetings, and I've gotten to know a lot of people on council and in the planning department. And overall, I think it's a lot of really good people. I, I feel really disheartened by how much adversarial energy this has all brought up between residents and, and maybe it's just the nature of the way the process works. People get entrenched, and I know a lot of mistakes were made in this process, and I appreciate the apology that was made for that. And I'd really like to find a way to move forward. I encourage the council to really take a look at moving forward with a refinement plan. I've heard some really good things about a two-step process, and I think one of the important parts really is that engagement and having meaningful input. I think a lot of times, there are checkboxes of meeting minimum standards for, for public outreach. But if nobody's showing up, how do we know they got the message? Depending on a, a area, neighborhood pamphlet or news letter that comes out three or four times a year with after-the-fact information isn't sufficient. People who are being impacted really do need to be notified with clear, accurate information that gives you the impact, not a survey that could be misleading. Everybody likes to breathe air and, and have fresh air and walk in walkable neighborhoods, that's a given. But if there's an agenda behind that and how that's being interpreted, we don't always know. Surveys are challenging. Some of the surveys recently, I've had to do three or four times, and if you stop in between, you don't get your input through. Some of the webcasts, I haven't been able to get because I have a Mac, and so I don't see that part of it. So we really do have to trust that our elected officials are watching out for our best interest and listening to people. And having a way that we have a meaningful engagement, I think a refinement plan is one of those ways. The other thing that's really important to me is looking at those commercial areas. It breaks my heart that we're seeing, you know, a single-story building going up where the bowling alley was on Willamette. There should be a way that we can incorporate some of that density along those commercial areas and not have big sprawling parking lots, and that should be considered, too. Thank you.
Peter Gallagher is next, followed by Theodora Dearborn.
Hi, my name is Peter Gallagher. I live on Thirteenth, East 31st Avenue, and I am the owner of a home that's scheduled or has been scheduled for rezoning on South Willamette neighborhood. Over the past 19 years, my wife and I have invested tens of thousands of dollars and countless hours of sweat equity improving our property, which is currently Zoned R1. Last May, we received a letter from the planning department informing us of the city's intention to rezon our property, and that we had four weeks to bring any concerns to their attention. I wrote two letters and twice attended city council meetings. I was given three minutes to speak at each one. Now, despite media reports to the demise of Swasey, and I appreciate the fact that apparently that original proposal has gone down, we received a second letter from the city informing us of the intention to rezon our property again. This time, the letter came with only two weeks of notice to provide input at this meeting, of which apparently I have two more minutes. of which apparently I have two more minutes. By the way, the letter was on slightly better quality paper, so I appreciate that. Despite, well, I'll keep it short. I'm a teacher with the 4J School District. I don't have enough extra hours in my week to read and decipher the multiple pages of technical writing and the current planning documents that I've received, although I appreciate receiving them. So I would like to tell you that my neighbors and I would like some clear and succinct answers to questions such as these three. First, does the current, is it in the current planning for, in the department, to continue to propose seven-to-eight story buildings along Willamette Street, particularly north of 20, I'm sorry, south of 29th Avenue? That is outside the commercial zone. If this is the case, many of my neighbors have wondered why all the illustrations of possible multi-resident buildings shown in the planning department publications never exceed three stories, as was the case in the department's earlier open house event at the library back last spring. We would also like to know, as homeowners who might be forced to rezone, but we have no intention of selling our homes, we're wondering if because of this forced rezoning, we would lose the protections from the impact of multifamily buildings, possibly high-rises, that are granted to our next-door neighbors? In other words, do we have a higher risk of loss for sunlight, privacy, and huge reductions in property resale value because we are on the wrong side of a dividing line imposed on our neighbors by the city? I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Ted Dearborn. Okay. And Seth, I can't read your last name. Followed by Josh Stowe.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Seth Sudowski. I live in Ward 2. I'm a homeowner there. I'm an active member of Southeast Neighbors, and I'm a member of We Can, the Walkable Eugene Citizens Advisory Network. I've been happy to hear in recent years about the city's adoption of the Climate Recovery Ordinance and the adoption of the Vision Zero policy. These goals tend to a large part on changing our development pattern of every family having a standalone home and every adult driving a car every day. As I followed the developments of Envision Eugene, it seemed that we were moving in the right direction. However, when city staff rolled out the South Willamette Zone, the level of opposition showed that we had missed a step relating citywide goals to changes in individual neighborhoods. It's been a year, nearly a year, that we've been talking about this in big public forums, and we don't seem to be any closer than we were a year ago to making a decision. Right now, we're in a long-term holding pattern. No one can move forward, and it seems like the city feels like any decision they made will be unacceptably politically unpopular. Further, assigning a different committee to undertake a refinement plan will not in any way increase trust. It'll just have a different group of people making a plan that is then not trusted. To move forward, we need to take a step back and initiate, before we initiate further area plans, we suggest that the city undertake a community process to clarify our terminology, add detail to our citywide goals, and share the burdens and benefits of growth that each area is expected to take on. We're proposing a process to the city of a, sorry, I lost my space. This does not replace localized processes, but sets the framework in which area plans or refinement plans could be more successful and consistent between local and citywide goals, and provide a forum where different areas can coordinate the broader initiatives that impact multiple neighborhoods. Eugene faces a challenge of affordable housing and housing choice that many cities across the nation are struggling with the same issue. We are in some ways fortunate that we have an opportunity to work together to develop constructive, community-supported solutions before it becomes as severe as it is in many other West Coast cities. I'll stop there. Thanks.
Thank you. Josh Stowe is next, followed by Ron Funk.
All right. Good evening, councilors and mayor. Thank you for your service. Thank you also to everyone who showed up tonight and to Arya and Jasmine watching at home. Three quick points about South Willamette and really broadly about Envision Eugene and many other related city goals. Engage residents, add meaning to our statements of core values, and manage growth explicitly, each in detail. First, we need a process that truly engages residents as central to the planning effort and a planning team, and you've heard that well tonight. Whether that is a refinement plan or potentially even an area plan, it must truly reach out to residents and must more fully engage them. I agree that it must be led by residents and supported by staff. I ask also, perhaps echoing concerns about engaging the busiest of our residents, such as single working mothers, that we come up with far better tools for engaging residents than we have had so far. Most of us are walking around with supercomputers and advanced telecommunications devices in our pockets, so we should be able to do better than the 18th-century technology known as the postal service. Second, be clear about our values. Several speakers have pointed out that in Envision Eugene, we have excellent value statements. I agree. Yet, this is less obvious than it seems. Some elements do not get enough attention. City council must far more explicitly and far better frame deliberations by a planning team in terms of Envision Eugene pillars. Having residents lead the process is necessary, but it's not actually sufficient. The neighbors' deliberations must operate within much clearer goals. With that framing of the deliberations at the outset, council must be clear, refinement plans and area plans return to council for approval, but on clear terms that are clear at the outset. Then, to make that possible, I hope we take seriously all of Envision Eugene's pillars. I said before, add meaning to our statement of core values. So we have to make the trade-offs much clearer. That will mean, in the context of a refinement plan or other neighbor-led process, far better tools than we've had to understand how the pillars relate. We've heard assertions, strong assertions, tonight about affordability and climate impacts and more, but our processes to date have had almost no information, no quantitative information, connecting various rezoning proposals to their impacts on these different outcomes, housing prices, transportation demand, carbon emissions, and more. Let's fix that and make our process much smarter. And third, we must manage growth. I know, I actually said "growth" out loud. And we know we cannot build a wall, has been suggested in a very different setting, in a different race. But we know people are going to move here, and therein lies much of our challenge. So as we embark on some sort of resident-led process, the city must inform those deliberations with some sense of growth and of necessity, change. Not managing growth will simply further damage affordability and hurt the most vulnerable. And specifically, I ask that you take seriously the proposals without endorsing any one particular proposal to provide some quantitative citywide context. Thank you.
Ron Funk is next, followed by Eleanor Hammel.
My name is actually Funky. I'm a funky kind of guy. And I'm a semi-retired land use planner, three years with the Community Development Section of Eugene Planning. And then I've been a consulting planner on my own in Eugene and Land County since retiring, until retiring at the end of last year, which was great. I have, like a typical planner, I have specific things that I want to address. One, or section one, would be, on Willamette Street, I will admit that it works better than I feared, except during drive time. Before the restriping, I test drove Willamette from 11th, the bus station, to 29th several times behind a bus, estimating travel times at 5:10 p.m. It ranged between an acceptable five minutes up to 15 minutes when there were multiple autorable riders or bicycles on the front and back. When we had two lanes, people had the opportunity to more or less get around them. Now, it's impossible. Where am I now? And so, this essentially makes a bad situation worse. And currently, with these supposed drive times, the traffic estimate or grade on that would be F during drive time hours. And that just doesn't make sense, particularly when you're trying to increase the density of the area. Number two, the overhead infrastructure should be placed underground without question. If this was brand-new construction, there'd be no question about, we cry, do it this way. I just got cataracts removed. I'm trying to adjust. If this was new construction, rather than an older section of town, there would be no question about the requirement to get the lines buried. And three, allowing the property or the Willamette Street to return to two lanes of traffic each way does, in fact, increase road capacity. I have noticed an increase in pedestrians on the street, but no increase in bicyclists. Now, I think I can prove that, but that remains to be seen. Also, left turn signals need to be installed at the signalized lights currently. As for the South Eugene or the SWASI envisioned nightmare, public notice, in my opinion, was totally inadequate for this kind of rezoning proposal. It appears that the planning department intentionally downlabeled the plan. All right.
Thank you.
Enough.
Eleanor Hammel is next, followed by William Ivanoff.
I'm Eleanor Hammel, and I live at 206 West 27th. And I love my area. I love being able to walk down to the shops, and I would like to, so to speak, for my age group. I am particularly concerned about people my age in a house, and we have our future in our house, and if we lose our real estate values, that is a real problem for us. But I think that Eugene, the city of Eugene, has done a wonderful job so far. I love the left-turny light coming out of Market of Choice. That is a great solution. The bus company, the bus drivers, say that it's much easier to drive their buses down Willamette. That's a big plus. But do think about what you're going to put next to small houses. There also must be off-street parking if you're going to have multiple housing. You can't block the streets with cars. And then, the other thing is, we talked about traffic lifts from Willamette. We need a left-turning signal at 27th. It is very difficult for me to go home going up 27th, so please look at that. But otherwise, I think the South Town area is fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. William Ivanoff is next, followed by Linda Dugan. Oh, Linda? And after her comes Tara Jones.
I'm Linda Dugan, and I live in Betty Taylor's Ward. Most of my comments and issues have been covered, so I don't want to belabor that point. I will say, enough has been said about the process, but I did go to one of the first meetings at the Amazon Annex, and I will tell you, it was full of people with great ideas, and there was no recorder. And so, we asked, "Are you tape-recording this? Is somebody recording this?" And the planning department who was there said, "No, we didn't hire anybody for tonight." You know, that was the beginning of the process, so that was kind of a telling statement for me at the beginning of the process. I don't live on Willamette, but I go there every day. It's my shopping node. And I will tell you that it's sad that the bowling alley burned, because it was a place for everyone to go, including as a former teacher and parent. Kids could go there. It was a safe recreational place. Where I grew up, we had actually a city-run community center that I would very much like to see us have something like that for kids. You could go after school, shoot hoops, do homework, do board games. Anyway, so we lost a place. And I find it very interesting that it's been approved, I have limited information on it, but that it has been approved, to have a single story, you know, wiping out, down to earth, no recreation center anymore, having a single story with all the talk about high-rise living and not even putting, like, at least one story of apartments or something on that property. That doesn't make any sense to me at all. Just a few comments about Willamette Street. I drive there pretty much every day. It's worse than it used to be. I think it was much better when we had two lanes. You could at least get onto Willamette. And if you get stuck behind a bus, that's another, and I'm worried about, you know, the fire department being able to get places. And I really have not seen an increase in bicycles. I see very few bicycles going on Willamette. I used to be an avid bicyclist, so it's not that I'm not supportive of it as a transportation, but I don't see a big increase in bicycles for the loss of lanes that we have. A real plus that I want to end with is the traffic lights at the intersection going into Market of Choice. It should have been done when it was built, but I am very glad that we have that now.
Thank you. Tara Jones is next, followed by Peter Esten Tomski.
Tara Jones from Amazon Neighborhood. And it's funny, I was coming up here to share this idea. I'm kind of excited about what we could possibly do with Willamette, but it sounds like since, I was going to say something about the burned-out bowling alley, that we could put up a multi-use building there. But I guess what I want to share is there is a possibility to make those streets beautiful, because they aren't. I mean, I shop there, but I often put it off because, as a bicyclist, it's unpleasant, not because there weren't bicycle lanes, I'm glad there are, but because there are no trees, and it's busy, and it's just, it's not, you know, I like all the stores there. But we could do, if we use this opportunity to create multi-use buildings instead of, I'm very disappointed, a single-story building in that place. I mean, I was thinking, you know, if we could get together with ideas, you could come up with things like, all right, so you take the bowling alley, and you take, let's say, Eugene Hardware, and you put it there, and you put a building on top of it, then you tear down Eugene Hardware, and you move another store there, and you put it up, and then you build above, and you just keep slowly going, and you pull it back, you plant trees, and you make a greenway someplace that people want to walk. I don't want to walk on Willamette. It's busy, it's gritty, and in the summer, it's very unpleasant to walk there without there being any trees. And I'm actually glad that there's, you know, now that there's only two lanes and there are bicycle lanes, it's a little bit more pleasant to be there. But I think of, if I think about this area, the places that are lovely to go are the areas we were thinking of redeveloping, that I bicycle through to see friends, and all those areas, that's not where we need change. Willamette Street, it could be something that not only has nice stores, but is a place you want to go to, because, as I said, there's a lot happening, there are more people around. And I guess the last thing is, a friend of mine said, "If there's going to be development, one request, considering some of the developments that have happened in other places, is perhaps we could also talk about building beautiful buildings, buildings that are nice to see, buildings that make you want to be there, to live there, to walk by them." And I know there's a 1% that's required for public buildings for art. I know it's hard to have an aesthetic requirement, but if you have people talking, there are things that are beautiful. And you could talk about, and you could say, "What about this plan?", and people could say, "Oh, my gosh, I don't want to walk by that." Some way to strive to have that area, this whole area, be a place that is lovely to look at and be, and, I mean, all of these things could be met. And one last thing about why it would be good to move the businesses around is that there are all these storefronts that aren't used, and for a developer, you want to know that are rented. But if you just move everybody around as you keep building up and then putting the shops in, you already have somebody who's established there to rent to. shops in, you already have somebody who's established there to rent to.
Thank you. Next up is Peter Esten Tamski, followed by Kathy Geng.
My name is Peter Esten Tamski. I live in the Betty Taylor Ward. Thank you for listening to us. I live here and I pay taxes in this area, so this is very important because there's a lot of people that think they have a stake in this, but they don't live here. It's there's plenty of people that feel unheard, but they maybe own a property that is nothing built on, they just want to develop and they are very forceful in trying to get a voice. But the people that live here that have a job are not retired. I I have a full-time job. I try to create my own company. It's really hard and being here is a huge investment in time. The refinement plan should be the basis of moving forward. That's very important, that the people in the area have a voice. So I do support Brown Clark proposal. Also, an example of what happened is the restriping of Willamette. I drive through there all the time. The traffic is much, much worse. And over the last three years, the traffic was getting worse and worse and it was a huge spike in amount of traffic, in speeding people that are annoyed through 29th that I live next to. I see it every day and the amount of bikes, minimal. There is few bikes maybe a day that drive by. I see the street from my window, so I know what's happening. The next thing is the measurement of the traffic that the city is doing. You are using the Lane County system to do that. You have to have more accurate information about what's happening. You have to read the data and have actual facts that you build on. Yeah, that would be it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kathy? And after her is Margie James.
Kathy Geng, Allen Zelenka's Ward. I draw attention to what in retrospect can be reported as an intentional or unintentional flaw by Eugene Planning and Building to ignore sunlight's increasingly vital role in contributing to happiness, i.e., permaculture yards, gardens, ground and roof-mounted solar thermal and electric systems that potentially adverse adversely impact quality of life of current residents. Attending an Envision public meeting here a couple of years ago at the school, I was stunned that Seven Pillars handouts exhibits had completely left out solar access protection. I protested, mentioning that I had brought up solar energy many times in emails. Eugene has a solar access ordinance for which I lobbied decades ago, as did hundreds of locals. I recently found comments I sent staff at the start of Envision's process where I emphasized the importance of protecting solar access and designing community responses to climate change, energy resilience, and recognizing enhanced local self-reliance, health and gardens, including pollinators, veggies, berries, et cetera. And we've recently discovered this vitamin D sun helps prevent cancer and maintain health. See the book called Earthing. In spite of planning publicly stating at the start of the Envision process, all public comments admitted would be included in Doc Sun after the public, all of my comments, including the key advice about preserving solar access, were omitted. They finally added them back, but by that time, everyone had already received and read the earlier document and I don't even think they sent out the document again with my comments in it. For years, Bill Welch, an eWeb manager, informed me that he could not persuade the city to get developers and builders together with eWeb staff to learn how to apply solar access protection in citing subdivisions and designing buildings. Overlooking solar power has been a longtime problem and Eugene designing its future. At City Club last year, Planning Commission Director Bill Randall replied to my question about solar access in relationship to denser housing in a laughing manner, he said in a presumptive tone of voice, of course, solar access and housing density are not compatible, paraphrasing him. Then from planning said on TV that there's no provision for solar access in downtown's commercial zone. Downtown, that may be acceptable, but commercial-style stack-and-pack residential housing could inhibit solar access potential with this pivotal point in Renewable Energy's long-adenated document by Republican Governor McCall, the transition document. Finally, recent tech like affordable solar electric cells, Tesla Powerwall and other batteries could store solar energy for evening use in electric vehicles. I also think now may be a time to consider a crucial sea change in state policy mandating growth within cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Margie James is next, followed by Gayanne Brenda.
Good evening and thank you for having this forum. My name is Margie James and I'm a resident of Ward Two, down in the 2800 block of Mill. It's an older, well-established neighborhood with a mix of modest, single-story homes, both renters and homeowners and mixed demographics. But I'm speaking tonight as a member of the Steering Committee for South Willamette Neighbors. On September 2nd, South Willamette Neighbors submitted a packet of documents representing community discussions and community outreach by South Willamette Neighbors. This info was submitted as public record for the discussion on South Willamette and was also sent to all of you. The packet included our most recent discussion in August, Discussions on Neighborhoods with Teri Harding, and it includes the minutes of the meeting, questions that were submitted to Teri and her responses. It also included the August/September 2015 Survey of Residents' Knowledge of the City's South Willamette Special Area Zone Discussion. And the results showed that 96% of the 211 respondents felt that the South Willamette Special Area Zone Plan needed to be postponed because of poor communication between city and residents of the area. And that's a good one for this, I mean, to have these kinds of discussions and be open again. And the third part was results of our petition to the City Council requesting suspension of adoption of the South Willamette Special Area Zone and a request to move forward with a refinement plan to address land use and transportation policies in the established residential neighborhoods and businesses in the South Willamette area. The petition was signed by 600 persons that live in the area of South Willamette and in the larger Eugene area. So South Willamette Neighbors appreciates you taking note of this submission and the requests by a broad range of Eugene citizens for the City Council to allow and encourage community engagements in decisions affecting citizens' properties and that legal requirements specifically for a refinement plan be followed and authorized by the Eugene City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Gayanne Brenda, followed by Mia Nelson.
Wasn't planning on saying anything, but I would have a teleprompter if I could. Okay. Just a second. You guys, I think that being new to this neighborhood and everything like that, that we're finding the same kinds of problems that all of Oregon's going through. It's not a build it and they will come thing. It's more like they're coming. So what are we going to do and how are we going to build it and how are we going to make it so that it's livable and that not too many people get pushed around? And this is very difficult. I encourage the Planning Commission to look toward Portland, who did a very fine job mostly of doing their planning and how old town was improved. And then up above that, the Pearl and the Northeast. But city planners are admitting that they made a mistake about Northeast. And that is, there was no planning for displacement of the people. It was an African-American neighborhood mainly. There had been poverty and the gangs had been there, but they were cleaning up. So people were selling their homes for 18,000, which they thought would be more than they'd ever get. And yet, 20 years later, they're worth, you know, over a quarter million, 350, 500, you know, 1,000. And these people, their kids, went to the cheapest rents out there, outer southeast, outer northeast by Gresham. Now it's one of the worst areas ever. It's moved into 122nd. And a lot of people from Cali came up and the thing is, is that these are people who were angry at how things went. Their homes were taken away from them. They wanted to stay home, but it's not home anymore. And their folks went, where can we go? Where's the family? Okay, it's cheaper rent down there in the south and there's, you know, not so much prejudice as Portland still does have. But I think this is a huge job. I mean, it's really, really a huge job and it's it's just huge. One of the reasons it's bigger here than other places that are happening with the landfills and the farmers and stuff like that is we're the third-largest metropolitan area in the state. And so, you know, they came up to Seattle. Seattle wants to be the next San Francisco. Portland doesn't. Portland's going to be the next Seattle. We're going to be the next Portland. And so, I mean, kind of, kind of, how is this? I mean, one of the things I do want to say, I hope I have time for it, is if we're the people for the people by the people government, okay, then what would, you know, what would us in the I'm not in the government, but you know, I'm saying, what would people in the government do if their secretaries and their assistants all of a sudden started running the show and kind of pushing them out and being bullying? Well, that's happened somewhat and I don't think it's a matter of trusting that it won't happen. It's just got to stop. You know, it's just really got to stop and we've got to look at different things.
Thank you. Thank you. Mia Nelson is next, followed by Cindy Allen.
I'm Mia Nelson. I'm representing 1,000 Friends of Oregon. We're a member-supported organization. We have several hundred members in Eugene and affordable housing is one of our top priorities. Affordable housing for South Eugene in particular matters a lot to me personally. Half my extended family lives within a quarter mile of the South Willamette Planning Area. My children graduated from this high school. I know and love many young people who grew up in this area and want to stay, but their biggest challenge is being able to find housing. And I just want you to notice, they are not here tonight. We're in a high school and the kids are not here. Why is that? My theory is for every land use change you might consider, there's at least two different constituencies. For some, the proposed change is the biggest negative. Stopping the change solves their concern. This constituency is pretty well-represented in your public process. They're going to make sure that you hear them now and in the future. But there is a largely silent second constituency for whom it is the lack of change that is the problem, at least in the long run. Whether they know it or not, every renter in the city has a vested interest in any land use actions or inactions that affect the housing supply. And when Eugene fails to do enough to encourage the creation of new housing, they are the ones who will eventually bear the worst consequences, but they are not here tonight. And you know what? You shouldn't expect them to be. No individual proposal is going to make or break the housing market. You may never see Eugene's renters turn out in huge numbers to demand that you approve or deny an individual plan, but that doesn't make their interests any less important. More than half of Eugene's households are renters. They matter as much as homeowners and the things that you do or don't do can hurt them too. So as you consider your next steps on public involvement, I ask that you please make sure that they are remembered and represented. And here's a couple of ideas. Don't rely on open houses, surveys or formal hearings and speaking opportunities like this one to tell you the whole story. Recognize you are never going to get a representative sample, never. Realize that if you appoint a citizen planning group, that will also not be representative. Only a small segment of the public can afford to or is willing to do that. Third, invite affordable housing nonprofits and others who have expertise on local housing development dynamics to provide early feedback on how your proposed plans might affect the housing supplies and ask them, what more can you be doing? And finally, most important, advocate yourselves for the needs of renters. Build in consideration for their needs, knowing they are out there. They are out there, even if they're not here at these forums or sending you emails, calling you, testifying. You need to be watching out for them because no one else is. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Allen is next, followed by Randy Prince.
We have followed with dismay what happened to the residents of Oakley Lane. The proposed housing was much too large for the small street and should not have been approved. Residents had to spend many thousands of dollars to protect their properties. In the South Willamette Plan, there were 83 pages of complicated legalese that would have massively rezoned longtime, single-family residential neighborhoods. The stop-force rezoning signs were everywhere and more than 600 residents signed a petition of grave concern. I'd like to tell you a story about a friend of mine who lives in the Silicon Valley of California. For more than 10 years, he had rented with predictable increases. This year, his complex was sold and the tenants were given short notice to vacate for nominal remodeling. The new rent was more than doubled. Land is a tangible asset and investors and corporations, many from other countries, are buying properties at record numbers. Large apartments are especially lucrative. We hear about urban growth planning and that Eugene should have massive rezoning, high-rises, stack-and-pack housing to save farmland. While at the same time Springfield's version is to annex the available land, 257 acres to its boundaries. The farmlands of Seve Loop were to be rezoned as an industrial site. I was in Springfield when the Seve Loop residents spoke. They called it a land grab. One man said that he had seen this maneuver in Hawaii and New Zealand and now residents in Oregon were seeing it. Some growth is reasonable, but these large, forced urban growth plans seem to be tailor-made to benefit the investors and the corporations. Many in Lane County are even questioning the projected numbers. Jobs and increased infrastructures are also of concern. Last summer, I was at Blue River Reservoir and there was no water in it. Do we even have enough water for the people who live here now? Areas such as Boulder, Colorado and Petaluma, California promotes slow growth. The investors don't like it, but the residents do. The natural resources of the area are also better protected. I look at what the residents of Oakley Lane, Seve Loop and South Willamette have been through. If this is what new urban planning looks like, I'm seriously concerned. We've always had neighborhood-led refinement plans that fit the neighborhoods and we need them more than ever now. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Prince is up next, followed by Paul Conti.
Hi, Randy Prince. I'm the Chair of the Amazon Neighborhood. I live about eight minutes bike ride away from the district. Our proximity is the reason our neighborhood has been involved, joined the Council of Southeast Neighborhoods and participated in discussions about this 20-minute neighborhood concept. It's our business district and access is the main issue for us. Our Steering Committee met and we decided we really couldn't speak on the issues like will housing prices inflate, solar access, how much density too much, but we did feel access is important, issues around transportation. So that's my official report. As far as my own views, I want to say, make an argument here that we should designate a citizen planning team. The citizens should be from the area. They should write a legally enforceable refinement plan. And if everyone agrees that we want to go with this new age design, then we should establish a substantive funding mechanism for improvements like a local improvement district or urban renewal district. The lack of integration with transportation is the key defect with the Swasey. And you had the MMA, it exempts a lot of this planning. It does correspond to the balkanization of the municipal government. We had the planning department doing the buildings, the public works doing the streets. This does not build a Pearl District or revitalize an underdeveloped transportation corridor. Won't work. You've got to fund these transportation amenities if you're ever going to make that vision happen. Some people say, oh, don't worry, nothing will happen too quickly. It's going to take a long time. Well, then the reality is what is built is just going to be to the existing strip mall reality. And if people do jump into action right away with none of that infrastructure funding, it will also be to the existing strip reality, strip mall reality. You need a whole list of infrastructure improvements. Many were suggested in the previous process. They are brushed aside. It wasn't really that department's specialty, modifications of streets and bikeways, streetcar and MX stops or MX stops, sidewalks, public parking that permits visiting multiple stores, undergrounding of utilities. There's a whole bunch of things and it just hasn't been taken into consideration. Our only funding method at this point is to subsidize private developments with MPTI. We haven't really negotiated and many of these things can't be negotiated that support the infrastructure of 20-minute neighborhood. It's not going to come from piecemeal approaches, allocations from departments here and there, politicians. politicians finding grants at the higher level. That's the bridge-to-nowhere approach. System development charges, we're loath to devote much of it to the immediate area. And really, you need to have a real funding mechanism. It requires public support, either from the commercial property owners or from the public at large for a local improvement district or from the public. And in order to do that, a refinement plan is the way you will build a solid basis to fund it.
Paul Conti is next, followed by Lisa Arkin.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I'm Paul Conti. I live in George Brown's Fighting Ward One. And I'm past Chair of the Jefferson Westside Neighbors. I don't speak on their behalf, but I speak from my experience. You know, honestly, even though many of you know I'm kind of the cantankerous guy that's always fighting on a lot of issues, most of what people in Eugene want is, you know, within pretty close sidebars. And we saw that in the Community Resource Group. The Community Resource Group wasn't well-run to produce an outcome, but it was well-run to produce the voices that we could hear. So the kinds of things we want are different kinds of housing. We want single-family, modest, single-family houses. We want apartments. We want apartments that are subsidized for seniors. We want cottage development. We want duplexes. We like tree-lined streets. We like to have commercial districts that are integrated with their housing. We like to have safe streets. We like to have parks that are easily accessible to residents. We like to have schools in our neighborhood, right? Pretty close to what we're looking for, right? So nobody's looking here to destroy neighborhoods, but we all seem to have different ways that we think we're going to get there and get into a fight about it. Let me tell you, if you want to see that neighborhood, just come walk in the Jefferson Westside Neighbors. We have all those things I mentioned. We have subsidized housing. We have transitional housing for ex-offenders from prison. We have veterans, subsidized housing for returning veterans' women. We have a variety of houses from houses that are going off on the market for the low 100,000s. We have that kind of community, and we have very high density. We have high rises like Lincoln Towers. We have apartment complexes like the ones on the east side of Polk. How did we get there? We've had engaged neighbors who developed two refinement plans and who developed a special area zone with the neighbors driving the bus and council and the Planning Commission and the rest of the community making sure we had done our work and approving it. Our refinement plan was approved by eight of the planning commissioners and eight of the city councilors. The Jefferson Westside Special Area Zone was approved late one December night after the 10 o'clock adjournment period for the council, eight to zero, and the council stood up, including the mayor, and applauded. Refinement plan, the mistake that people are making about refinement plans is the refinement plan is not a negotiating group. A refinement plan is to have members of various different constituencies work to make sure the public is engaged, fully informed, their voices are heard, and that what comes out of the community is what's in the draft refinement plan. That's the way to do it. Brown Clark is the right start. Thanks.
Lisa Arkin, last one up.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council for holding this forum. Lisa Arkin from Ward One. I'm also a board member of the Friendly Area Neighborhoods, although I don't speak on their behalf, but I do speak on behalf of Beyond Toxics. As proposed, until it was withdrawn, the South Willamette rezoning was essentially forced upzoning. Upzoning results in the displacement of lower and middle-class income residents and elderly residents. Those of us who value equity and fairness would recommend that the city study and assess and then work diligently to ensure that Envision Eugene Planning does not displace longtime residents in our existing functioning neighborhoods. Where in Eugene would displaced residents go? Well, they'd probably go west, where things are a little cheaper. But on the topic of equity and fairness, the city should be looking toward the neighborhoods in West Eugene where the lack of attention to comprehensive planning has created food deserts, healthcare deserts, public, lack of adequate, excuse me, public transportation, and a lack of adequate open space, as well as crumbling infrastructure. There are no 20-minute walkable neighborhoods in Bethel and Trainsong. In fact, residents there have to drive considerable distances to buy groceries. I, in my neighborhood, have five groceries within a 20-walkable-minute excursion. In Trainsong, there are no or very few sidewalks, no curbs, no storm drains. And yet, dozens of functioning curbs in downtown and Ward One have recently been dug up and replaced without any parent need. That is not equity and fairness for West Eugene compared to downtown and South Eugene. If the city wishes to advance its climate and energy plans and environmental justice, the focus should be on workable, safe, walkable neighborhoods, great infrastructure for all our neighborhoods, not just those lusted after by developers. Thank you.
So thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Appreciate all the comments. I just want to do a couple cleanup things here. I wanted you to know that we fixed our MAC issue on our, so you should be able to get the things that you want off of our city email now. We retarded that. I also wanted to ask city manager, there you are. So follow up with Mr. Gallagher on the questions that he asked. Can somebody follow up on that, please?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And maybe somebody could see him tonight and let him know how to get those questions answered. And let's see. And I am assuming we kept all the notes on the restriping issues that we heard tonight, so we can use that information as well. And those are the ones I had on my list. Anybody else have anything before we close up tonight? Seeing none, thank you all very much. And we will, I'll remind you again, council will be addressing this issue next Monday in work session. So they'll be setting a direction they intend to go in the future at that work session after listening to you tonight and all the other times that they've listened. Thanks.